Agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mounner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
All right, well, good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of November 8th, 2022. You now have an hour and a half to go vote, so if you haven't voted, make sure you get that done, please. This meeting is called to order. Today being November 8th, 2022. We're going to do an attendance. No, we're not. We have everybody here. So if you'd take note, all members are in attendance. A roll call is not necessary. The next two items on the agenda is our invocation, and that's tonight is going to be done by Glendale Police Chaplain Don Lopman. Gentlemen, if appropriate, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd remove it, if everyone would please stand for the invocation, and then after the invocation, if everybody would remain standing, including you, sir, for our pledge of allegiance. Go ahead, sir.
My prayers this evening, actually, as you go through my reading about four scriptures, hang on after the first two, it's a little bit harder. Like most scripture, the first introduction is a little bit harder to take, and then God puts a real exclamation point at the end of it. So, "If you are wise, living life of study goodness, so that only good deeds will pour forth, and if you don't brag about them, then you will be truly wise. And by all means, don't brag about being wise and good. If you are bitter and jealous and selfish, that's the worst sort of lie. For jealousy and selfishness are not God's kind of wisdom. Such things are earthly, unspiritual, inspired by the devil. For wherever there is jealousy or selfish ambition, there will be disorder and every other kind of evil." Here's the good part. "But the wisdom that comes from heaven is first of all pure and full of quiet gentleness; then it is peace-loving and courteous. It allows discussion and is willing to yield to others. It is full of mercy and good deeds. It is wholehearted and straightforward and sincere. And those who are peacemakers will plant seeds of peace and reap a harvest of goodness." And God, we ask you to bless this word. Let it be as seeds in this meeting tonight to bring about peace and goodness. In your name we ask, in Jesus. Amen.
Amen. If anyone would please join me with our pledge of allegiance, keep in mind while you're giving a pledge tonight, the fact that we do have vote and the opportunity that we have for the freedom to give a pledge. So with that, could you join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chaplain. Okay, with that, folks, if everybody is not aware, Councilmember Aldama, a few days ago, announced that a past member of...
Norma Alvarez.
I'm getting there.
Hubbard.
I have it here. Past member of our council, Norma Alvarez, passed a couple of weeks ago, not quite a couple of weeks ago, a week and a half ago. And so the service is going to be held this evening, and then also that's awakened, then tomorrow, I believe, is the funeral. So if everybody wouldn't mind, if we could stand up again, I'm sorry, and just for a moment of silence, I'd appreciate that. Okay, next on our agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the October 25th, 2022 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the October 25th, 2022 voting meeting minutes?
Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing's ayes, haves, do have it. That passes. Proclamations and awards. We do have a proclamation today declaring November 2022 as Employee Gratitude Month here in Glendale. We will be joined by the Glendale Employee Engagement Committee and Success Factor Award recipients, and so I'll come down here in just a second. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll have you folks come up. I can speak, I believe, for all of our council. We truly, truly appreciate all of your efforts of professionalism that all of you, all of our hard-working employees, put forth throughout Glendale each and every day, every week, every month, and every year. Thank you so very, very much for that. Give me a minute, and we'll come down here and read the proclamation. I'm guessing that's why you're there, right? Yeah, okay. Why don't y'all come up here? You two?
He is an employee.
Okay, everybody here? Okay, so whereas Glendale employees are public servants who work with professionalism, compassion, and dedication, and whereas Glendale employees are responsible for providing necessary emergency services, access to community resources and quality amenities, ensuring roads, buildings, and intersections are built, operated, and maintained to industry standards, and city finances are incurred, utilized, and tracked efficiently and in accordance with the industry standards, laws, and city policies, promoting economic growth and healthy lifestyles for employees, residents, businesses, and visitors, the licensing of both professionals and businesses, the enforcement of laws, statutes, ordinances, and policies, safeguarding the environment and for preserving our historical and cultural resource, and whereas Glendale employees support the well-being of their communities through acts of volunteerism, charity, and compassion, and whereas residents are encouraged to share a story of their favorite Glendale employee by posting a social media and using the hashtag #GlendaleGovLove. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim November as Glendale Employee Gratitude Month and encourage all employees to continue to improve the lives of the people that we serve every day. I also ask that citizens express their gratitude to our employees for their dedication to public service. That was signed by our Deputy Chief Clerk and myself, and so who gets this? You do. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks for voting. I bet you'd like to say something, right? Come on, come on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this honor as well as all the other recipients. We are all happy to serve, and I think that just sums it up, so thank you very much.
All right, good job. Adam, you taking picture?
Yes.
All right, why don't we stand in front? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Items three through eight, items on the consent agenda are a routine nature, but they've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. Now, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Three Through Eight?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve Consent Agenda Items Three Through Eight. Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve the Consent Agenda Items Three Through Eight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Hearing's ayes, haves, do have it, that motion carries. Moving on to consent resolutions, could you read items nine through 13 by number and title, please?
Item nine, resolution number R-22-111, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of understanding with the Arizona Department of Public Safety in commercial vehicle enforcement matters on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 10, resolution number R-22-112, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, ratifying the acceptance of an award, number 15J-COPS-22-GG-01461-T-ECP from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services (COPS) in the approximate amount of $480,000 under the funding opportunity entitled "2022 Fiscal Year 2022 COPS Technology and Equipment Program Invitational Solicitation" on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 11, resolution number R-22-113, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, ratifying the acceptance of an award, number 15J-COPS-22-GG-01461-T-ECP from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services (COPS) in the approximate amount of $715,000 under the funding opportunity entitled "2022 Fiscal Year 2022 COPS Technology and Equipment Program Invitational Solicitation" on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 11, resolution number R-22-113, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, ratifying the acceptance of an award, number 15J-COPS-22-GG-01461-T-ECP from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services (COPS) in the approximate amount of $715,000 under the funding opportunity entitled "2022 Fiscal Year 2022 COPS Technology and Equipment Program Invitational Solicitation" on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 12, resolution number R-22-114, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement between the United States Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration and the Glendale Police Department for continued participation in a tactical diversion task force through federal fiscal year 2025-26. Item 13, resolution number R-22-115, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, AZDEMA, for the contingent use of emergency operations centers.
Do you have any speaker cards for any of the resolutions?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve items nine through 13 on a consent resolutions agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the consent resolution, nine through 13.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember Clark, to approve items nine through 13 on a consent resolutions agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing's ayes, haves, do have it, that motion carries. Moving on to bids and contracts, would you introduce item 14 for us?
Authorization to enter into amendment number two with System Innovators, a division of N. Harris Computer Corporation.
Do you have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 14?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described amendment number two with System Innovators.
Second? Motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from the Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Yes, Mayor, I will, as usual, explain my vote. This is a five-year contract, does not allow for continuity of oversight by a four-year city council. I will vote nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Moving on to ordinances, can you introduce item 15, 022-79?
Ordinance number 022-79, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property between the City of Glendale and Fox 4 LLC for property located on 79th Avenue at the Lamar Road alignment, and directing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the sale, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Glendale Principal Engineer Jamie Chapin.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to authorize entering into a purchase and sale agreement with Fox 4 LLC for city-owned property on 79th Avenue, approximately 550 feet south of Glendale Avenue. This is a parcel that is 50 feet wide by 50 feet wide. It is an old well site which the city no longer needs. The parcel will be sold to Fox 4, which surrounds the parcel on three sides. Fox 4 has operated a construction equipment rental business at this location since 1997, and they would like to incorporate this parcel for additional parking. To give you an idea of the size, the Fox 4 site, the site that they own now encompasses approximately four acres. Our parcel is 0.06 acres, so it would be a very small increase to the site. The site is, the parcel is zone C3, so once you applied the appropriate building setbacks, you really would not be able to build anything on this site. So considering these items, in June, council gave direction to move forward with the sale to Fox 4 for the cost of the sale. This equates to $1,471 or 59 cents per square foot. It should also be noted that once sold, the Water Services Department will no longer have to maintain this site, and the city will not have this site as a liability. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Can I get a motion on item 15, ordinance 022-79?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 022-79.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Oh.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Would you introduce item 16, ordinance 022-80?
Ordinance number 022-80, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting the development impact fees identified in the infrastructure improvement plan and development fee report dated April 26, 2022.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Glendale Engineering Director Don Bessler.
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Phelps. Members of council, this is an item that's been before you over the last nine months, about a half a dozen times. Again, the development impact fees are derived in order to ensure that growth pays its fair share for expanding infrastructure necessary to do two things, to serve that growth and to ensure that the service that's delivered to the existing residents and existing community is not diminished. So this is the culmination of that effort. Tonight, if adopted, this will be the final act in this measure to update our transportation development impact fees. What staff will do then, if this is adopted, is we will remove the draft watermarks and draft references throughout the document. We will tidy it up to make sure it's in conformance with the city budget, and then we will publish it on our city website. That's the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions? Can I get a motion on item 16, ordinance 022-80?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 16, ordinance number 022-80.
Second. Second.
A motion from Councilmember Aldama, a second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. You now, can you introduce item 17, ordinance 022-81, please?
Ordinance number 022-81, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 25, nuisances, Section 25-65, exemptions from noise level regulations, and setting forth an effective date.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for council to amend Chapter 25, our noise ordinance, as it pertains to permissible fireworks. Back in December of 2020, council adopted a provision that made it illegal to use permissible fireworks between the hours of 12:30 a.m. and 7 a.m. on any day in which permissible fireworks are allowed by state law. And as a reminder, that's generally about an eight-day window around New Year's and the Fourth of July. The state adopted a new law in, or amended the law in April, March of this year, allowing permissible fireworks to be used until 1 a.m. on January 1st, so you can start using them the evening of December 31st, and you can continue to use them until 1 a.m. on the 1st of January, and then the same with 4th of July. You can begin using them on the 4th of July, early evening hours, and continue using through the 5th at 1 a.m. That is now in conflict with our code because our code says 12:30 a.m., and so in speaking with legal, we need to amend our code so that we allow the use of permissible fireworks as state law dictates until 1 a.m., only on January 1st and July 5th. Every other day where permissible fireworks are allowed, we can still restrict the hours beginning from 12:30 a.m. to 7 a.m. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Looking at the language in the actual, again, I sent a message to Mr. St. John. It's not very clear the way the language is written. If you read item 13, it's a double, it's asking, it's saying, these are the exceptions from the noise levels, and then it goes through, and it's very confusing to me, and I think we need to rewrite it slightly. Noise from permissible firework, this is an exception. Noises from permissible fireworks and their use as defined in Section 2670.3, except between the hours of 20:30 a.m. to 7 a.m., or the hours of 1 a.m. to 7 a.m. So my first question is, why do we have two hours? That's...
Councilmember, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, you didn't read the rest of the statement.
Okay.
So the way it would read is noises from permissible fireworks and their use is defined in the section, except between the hours of 12:30 a.m. to 7 a.m. That's what we currently have. The addition is, or the hours of 1 a.m. to 7 a.m., only on January 1st and July 5th. That's the way the ordinance would read. I understand that may seem confusing because the permissible fireworks section that's referenced gives you the dates that permissible fireworks are allowed to be used. So you kind of have to, a constituent would have to cross-reference both sections through the hyperlink that's provided in the code. If the council wants this to be reworded in a way that, in your minds, make it more clear, we can certainly do that.
My suggestion is, what if you just make it date-specific on the two dates that are the exception?
Mayor, we can do that.
I think that would...
That would fix the issue.
Mayor, we will make that adjustment.
Okay. Okay, so with that, with that correction, any other conversation?
Mayor, may I read into the record how it would read?
Yes.
Okay. So it would read, noises from permissible fireworks and their use is defined in Section 26-70.3, except between the hours of 12:30 a.m. to 7 a.m., period. On January 1st and July 5th of each year, permissible fireworks may be used, except between the hours of 1 a.m. to 7 a.m.
Works.
I think that does it.
That's okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion on item 17, ordinance 022-81?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we approve the ordinance with the amendments as written, as read by Mr. St. John.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from the Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended action. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I would just like to note that this is the minimum change that we can make that expands the hours and still comports with state law. Otherwise, we wouldn't be expanding the hours of firework noise. And with that, I vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Clark?
Yes, thank you. I may be stepping on Councilmember Aldama, or Vice Mayor Aldama's toes if I am, I apologize. But for, the mayor mentioned that former Councilmember Norma Alvarez passed away not too long ago. Her funeral mass is tomorrow morning at 10 a.m. at Our Lady of Perpetual Help here in Glendale, and I hope that if you have the time, you will come and pay your respects for the service of Norma Alvarez. She was a pistol, yes, but she also cared deeply about her residents and about her district, and that should not be overlooked for any reason. And secondly, I'm telling people now, my next district meeting will be Thursday, December 1st. Because I have no meeting space large enough, I'm having it at the Desert Diamond Arena, formerly called Heel River Arena, outside on the second level on the Dos Equis patio. Dress warmly, please. That's 6 o'clock, Thursday, December 1st. Excuse me for the frog.
There was advertising there, wasn't there?
Sure was.
Yeah.
She didn't say she's serving Dos Equis. She didn't say that.
No, I didn't.
Did she say free beer?
There will be refreshments, but I don't think it'll be Dos Equis.
Councilmember Hugh?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm amazed she's upset she's going to the arena and having a special reception. Fantastic. I had my district meeting, I want to thank city staff for the wonderful job they did helping me put on my district meeting. That's it, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of things. I want to thank, first of all, Water Services staff for coming out and doing the presentation last Thursday, the Councilmember Melner and I co-host. We had probably about 80 residents there, and they got a lot of good information, they asked a lot of good questions, so thank you to Water Services staff, and thank you to the residents that came out. And then I saved the date for Choya residents and for staff as well. December 8th will be the, I don't know what annual, because we skipped the last couple years, Choya Holiday Mixer, 530 Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center, ugly sweater contest also this year, so wear your ugliest sweater and come and have a good time. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing to nightmare.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing to nightmare.
And I have something, for those of you that celebrate Christmas, we have our Hometown Christmas Parade, Saturday, December 10th, 2022, starts at 11 a.m. at 51st Avenue in Glendale, runs down to almost 59th Avenue in Glendale. This is our ninth annual parade. If you have the ability and the opportunity, bring some food with you. The benefit of the Hometown Christmas Parade, besides celebrating Christmas, the camaraderie and the traditions that we start, we also get a chance to help out Hope for Hunger Food Bank. And this year, we have made an exception that we are honoring one of Glendale's members that worked for us that passed away during COVID. He was a very huge part of the food drive that the City of Glendale did each and every year. So I have posters for all of the council members up here, if you can pass those down to everybody. And then we also have other literature available for you, if you'd like to post it, for the citizens, for the employees. It's a lot of fun, come out and celebrate with us, have a good time. With that, that concludes that portion of it. The next on the agenda is our citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity available to citizens to bring information and business before the council that is not on the printed agenda. I have two cards here. I'm going to start off with Mr. Baird. I haven't seen him in quite a while. I'm pretty sure I know why he's here, but sir, you know the, you know the rules, you got three minutes, need you to state your name, the district you're from, and don't need your address, just the district you're from, if you know it, if not, the crossroads. And then Mr. Dibler, you're up after him, if you'd be ready to go. Mr. Baird?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Yeah, it was 2019, I believe, was the last time that I was here. I appreciate you guys as a council, and really, today, I just wanted to be an encour, hopefully be an encouragement to you. I appreciate what you guys do, and what you do is important, and because what you do is important, I wanted to discuss what God says about the role of the magistrate, specifically the lesser magistrate, and when I say lesser, I don't mean not important, I simply mean that is under the authority of other magistrates, for example, the state magistrate, the federal magistrate, et cetera. So let me read Romans 13, starting in verse 3.
So let me read Romans 13, starting in verse three. "For rulers are not a cause of fear for good behavior, but for evil. Do you want to have no fear of authority? Do what is good, and you will have praise from the same. For it, the authority, is a minister or a deacon or servant of God to you for good. But if you do what is evil, be afraid, for it does not bear the sword for nothing. For it is a minister," again, "a deacon or servant of God, "an avenger who brings wrath on the one who practices evil." So we see here in Romans 13 that the basic function of the magistrate is to be a terror to the one who does evil, and a protector and an upliftor of the one who does good or does righteousness. Now, of course, the question then is, what happens when a magistrate flips those roles? What happens when a magistrate actually approves of that which is evil, and disapproves of that which is good? And this is where the lesser magistrate shows its importance and comes into play. It then becomes the duty of the lesser magistrate to resist the higher magistrate that approves of evil and disapproves of that which is good, which is what you guys are called to do as a lesser magistrate. And of course, I'm sure it would be no surprise to you to know that I'm primarily speaking of abortion and the issue of abortion, which is the murder of babies in our, in our state. And right now, because of things going on in the courts and an injunction against the complete ban of abortion, it is strictly legal right now in Arizona for that to happen. So my encouragement for you guys today would be to, to do what is right. Phoenix City Council just recently passed a resolution where, that essentially calls upon the state legislature to eliminate any, any bans on abortion whatsoever, and also calls upon the police to prioritize calls, or to deprioritize calls against abortion. I would encourage you, as Glendale City, to be equally as bold as Phoenix, but in the righteous direction instead of the direction of wickedness. And again, I appreciate you guys for letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Your timing is right on the second. Okay, Mr. Dibler.
Hi, my name is James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. Last weekend, I saw an individual at the bus stop at 51st Avenue and Olive Avenue, taking drugs near the local gas station in public. She injected a needle into her arm. The Glendale Police Department was not present during the time of the incident. Furthermore, we need to hire more police officers to keep people safe from danger. Currently, there is a number of police officers on the streets to keep people safe or clean. For insurance, just recently, I saw a homeless guy sleeping at the bus stop with his shopping card. It is critical that the Glendale Police Department keep people safe in public and educate the community about the danger surrounding drug use. Also, we need to take care of homeless people through the Glendale Works Program to provide housing and gain a job to get them off the street. Phoenix Rescue Mission and Zink Visant Depots Society is doing an excellent job on people who are struggling with homelessness, drug addiction, and trauma. Finally, I would like to see a new Chase Bank at 59th Avenue and Olive Avenue across the street from Glendale Community Collins and New Starbucks Coffee. This would replace Starcraft Shopping Center. J.C. Morgan and Chase seems interested to buy this shopping center, demolish this building, and put a bank in its place. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, James. Okay, there being no further business before the council tonight. I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. No objection from this council. This meeting is adjourned. You still have just under an hour to go vote if you haven't done so. Ad adjourned.